And we're recording now. This is, this Byron, you may start the meeting at this time.
The meeting will please come to order and I'll ask Dr. Buck to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Would you please stand for the pledge?
Thank you.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. And I will ask as we begin the meeting, if everyone will mute their mics. And if you will, as we continue through the meeting, will you please raise your hand to be acknowledged? And then I'll try to recognize you and then you can unmute and speak. And first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, which is an action item. Dr. Buck?
Madam Chair, move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Riddick?
I have second.
Thank you, sir.
Board members, please prepare to vote. Board Chair Byron?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie?
Next, we have public speakers on agenda topics. Ms. Gardner, there are none?
No ma'am, there are none.
Thank you. Next, we have reports by the superintendent, Dr. Gordon.
Yes ma'am, thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Ethnet Ward, our community engagement officer, to provide some great news that is still occurring in Suffolk Public Schools. Ms. Ward?
Yes, good evening again, of course, good things are always happening here in Suffolk Public Schools. We're going to start tonight by recognizing the Project Lead the Way program at Lakeland. So just to give you some background, Project Lead the Way is an American nonprofit organization that develops for elementary, middle, and high schools across the country. Lakeland High School here in Suffolk is home to the Project Lead the Way biomedical sciences program. So within this program, students are able to explore concepts of biology and medicine to determine factors that led to the death of a fictional person. They're able to investigate the case, examine autopsy reports, investigate medical history, and explore medical treatments that might have prolonged the person's life. So they sure are learning a lot in this program. The activities and the projects introduce students to human physiology, basic biology, medicine, and research processes, while allowing them to design their own experiments to solve the problems. That being said, we want to congratulate Sarah McDonald, the Project Lead, and the Project Lead the Way students and staff at Lakeland, where the biomed program is one out of 143 programs to be named a Project Lead the Way distinguished school for the 2019-2020 school year. And of course, again, students are able to develop and demand knowledge and skills that they will use both in school and for the rest of their lives. They're empowered to engage in problem solving and process thinking. They're able to develop technical knowledge and skills and build communication skills, along with exploring career opportunities. The Project Lead the Way's teacher training and resources support the teachers as they engage their students in this real world, real world learning. So this is such a great honor to achieve here in Suffolk. And again, we want to congratulate Lakeland High School for such an outstanding achievement.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ward. I mean, we are just so proud of the work from Mr. Wagner, Ms. McDonald, the entire biomedical team at Lakeland High School. I mean, to be one out of 143 in the entire country really shows you the excellence that we're talking about. Also reinforces our strategic plan and building exceptional schools. To get a recognition like that, it shows you how exceptional Lakeland High School, that program, and overall our students are in Suffolk Public Schools. So definitely congratulations again to Lakeland High School and their biomedical program. Ms. Byron?
Also, I would like to say, I think Mr. Mittnick and myself, and he might want to comment, were there, I think, in the early phases of the biomedical program. I think we both attended a lot of the opening ceremonies and sessions and worked with the first class of students that came through. And of course, the board at that time was 100% behind this program biomedical, and we have continued to do that, and they are an outstanding group. I can only say so much about Ms. McDonald as a leader in that program. She's done a fantastic job, she's worked with those students, they have become like a family. And I think I've attended every white coat ceremony they've had, except of course this year, we're not having one. But I have really missed that this year, that was one of my highlights every year of going to that, because you see the devotion and the dedication that those students and the teachers have with each other. And it's all about building those relationships, and that's what make people very successful. Any other comments?
Yes, Ms. Byron. Ms. Byron, I'd like to congratulate Lakeland High School's Project Lead the Way biomedical science. I was involved in the steering committee for that program for several years. And the key was finding the right teacher to lead that program. And most definitely Suffolk Public Schools found Sarah McDonald. And over the past year, she has done a magnificent job with her students. And she has challenged her students to do the best that they could. And each of them comes out of her program, so many life skills in addition to what they've learned. So congratulations to Lakeland High School, to Mrs. McDonald, and all the students who participate in the Project Lead the Way biomedical science program.
Thank you, Mr. Mittnick. Any other comments? Dr. Gordon?
Dr. Gordon, did you have any comments? Okay, so we also want to recognize next, the Governor's School for the Arts. So we had a few students who participated in a virtual art show. So this year, the Governor's School for the Arts could not present its 32nd spring jour art show, of course, due to the COVID-19 outbreak. The show was originally scheduled for March 19th. So instead, they presented their art show virtually so the public could still see all the fantastic artwork by the students. A number of students in Suffolk Public Schools were selected to be featured in the show, and they can be spotted in the Governor's School of the Arts virtual art show video on YouTube. These students are as follows, we have Haley Bowlesman from Kings Fork, Elijah Gett from Kings Fork, and Sydney Osborne, also from Kings Fork. We have Damon Jones from Nansman River, and Kobe Davenport, also from Nansman River. So what an amazing job to these students, and we certainly look to the students who participate in the Governor's School of the Arts as innovators and inspirations in the art community.
We thank them.
I couldn't agree with you more, Ms. Ward, and that creativity from our students, even though we had to be virtual with this display, the fact that we have this number of students being recognized, the work of the Governor's School, and you know, as we get an opportunity to really take a look at the artwork that we have in the SAO, and even when we went to the Suffolk Art Show earlier this year, there is so much talent in our school division. And our students and their ability to be creative and innovative really comes out when we give them that opportunity. So we are so proud of these students.
Thank you. Moving along, we will go to Ms. Ward again for Q-Daddies, provides lunch for the Suffolk Public School food and nutrition and transportation staff.
Yes, so lastly, as a part of our good news report, we want to give a huge shout out and recognition to our food and nutrition services and transportation department staff. They've been an integral part in getting our meals out to our students throughout the community. So in order to show them our appreciation, we shared the hashtag, not all heroes wear cakes. On Friday, May 1st, the staff was treated to a meal from Suffolk Public Schools from Q-Daddies BBQ. So essential workers, as we know, have been helping to feed our children during this global pandemic. So if we put that into perspective, they're really risking their lives out there. As you can see, we've included some comments from the community from our social media pages, so I'll read a few of them. From Nicole Perkins, she says, "Thank you so much, you guys have done an awesome job." Sarah Miller calls them heroes, "Thank you so much for making sure so many of our children are not going hungry." Jill Walton says, "This is just one more reason why I love my school system." Gladys Knight says, "Thank you for taking time out to make sure the children are fed." Heather Ferguson says, "Big hugs to all who helped make this happen, you rock." Carol Carnage says, "What a wonderful team, thank you for reaching out to our SPS students." And Christopher Amanto says, "Thank you so much for your dedication and hard work." And here you'll see some group photos of the staff wearing their masks and practicing social distancing.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, and the food and nutrition transportation staff. They should be commended for such an outstanding job. I thank Q-Daddies for recognizing that and helping make their day special. That was very nice of them to do that for Suffolk Public Schools and our employees. Dr. Gordon, do you have anything?
You know, just the overall teamwork that we're seeing from two departments, under the leadership of Parker Whiting and Food Nutrition Services and Beverly Young, now Transportation Department, I mean, this isn't easy, what they're doing. And the fact that, you'll hear me talk about the implemented step, they're even expanding our meal distribution program, and Ms. Young has revised our transportation routes. As information comes in, for families that may be in need, as some of our population becomes even more transient, potentially we have some homelessness going on. Our Transportation Department has adjusted their bus route to follow the plan and to make sure that we're doing whatever we can for support, and we're just so thankful. This really shows that SPS strong, this really shows that teamwork and that dedication that we have. And we're just so happy that the city of Suffolk has supported us. The great comments that Ms. Ward just read to you really shows the dedication of all of the employees. I'm just so proud that we are able to.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Next, we'll move on to the Finance Committee report. I will give a report on the Finance Committee, and then I guess Ms. Forsman will be on hand for answers to questions and so forth. The Finance Committee of the Suffolk School Board met on Tuesday, May 12th. Chair Barham, Vice Chair Buck, Superintendent Dr. Gordon, and Ms. Forsman, Executive Director of Finance, were present. The agenda covered the following topics: changes to fiscal 2019-2020 revenue due to the COVID-19 pandemic, current year-end planned fiscal projects, proposed changes to the 2021 school board approved budget due to the changes in city appropriation, HBS, and state funding, and other possible revenue shortfall calls for fiscal 2021. Ms. Forsman and Dr. Gordon and Dr. Buck and myself reviewed some of these things, and some of them included. Changes to current fiscal year included a sales tax revenue shortfall estimated at 1.3 million and a state suspension of lottery funds, supplemental per pupil payments in the amount of 1.8 million. This, of course, will severely limit the projects and purchases that are normally made from year-end savings, as the school board can see from the resolution that is on the agenda this evening, authorizing the superintendent to extend funds at the end of the year. The listed projects represent the recommendations of the administration of items that have been prioritized as the ones most needed. These projects have no amounts associated with them, as the Finance Department is still receiving quotes, and the money to fund them may not even be available at the end of June. On May 26th, the school board will meet to adopt our 2021 budget. This is late this year due to our current pandemic situation. Funding has been reduced by both the city of Suffolk and the Commonwealth of Virginia in the amount of $4.4 million less than our school board approved budget. Many items had to be considered to reduce the budget by this amount of money. An item I was listing in all the changes and the draft, teachers and bus driver scales will be made available to the school board soon after the city council votes on the budget, finalizing the school appropriation for next year. Also, the CARES Act was discussed. The CARES Act stimulus money from the federal government is estimated to be 2.9 million, but it comes with a lot of strings attached. Uses are limited, and an application will come before the school board with all the details of its planned use. And I believe Ms. Forsman mentioned that it probably would come to the school board in June. Is that correct, Ms. Forsman?
Yes ma'am.
Finally, we talked about unknown revenue situations, and we discussed that, and the estimates were shared for 2021 budget. And at this time, no action was taken on these items, as the estimates are not firm and the circumstances unknown. Actions may have to be taken in the fall of 2020, once more information is available and as time goes on. And that is the report from the Finance Committee. Ms. Forsman, do you have anything to add?
No ma'am, you covered it well.
Okay, any questions? Ms. Story? Ms. Story?
Could you just, I know that the city council meets on the 20th. So when will that line by line be available? Our meeting's on the 26th, so there's only five days in between there for us to look through all those pages. When, when will it be ready for us to view the line items?
We hope to have it available to the board. We hope to have it available to, we hope to have it available to the board by the 21st or 22nd of May.
Okay. And that'll be just electronic? Will that be an electronic copy, do you think, or hard copy?
Electronic copy, and it won't be the entire budget, it will be just the lines that are affected?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ford.
Well, how can we get a copy of the entire budget? How can we get a copy of the entire budget? Because we have to vote, we have to look at it to vote on it.
Well, we don't produce an adopted budget until such time as the board approves it. So you have your approved budget that the, that the school board has approved, you have that copy that has every line, and we will provide you each line, each item that is reduced from that budget on the 21st or 22nd.
Okay, and then will we get the teacher's salary too, because that would change?
Correct, the teacher's salary, draft teacher's salary scale and the bus driver's salary scale, the draft will come to the board on the same time, at the same time.
Administration too?
Well, that scale isn't really changing, it's a 1% change, at least at this point, we believe a 1% change, depending on what the city does finally approve.
Okay, okay, well, thank you, Ms. Forsman, I appreciate that, thanks.
No problem.
Any other questions? If no other questions, we'll move on to next item, Suffolk Public Schools' response plan. Dr. Gordon?
Yes ma'am. Through trying times of what we're dealing with across Common Butthead, Virginia, I wanted to take the time to provide our school community and our school board with an update on our SPS response plan. As we discussed at our last school board meeting, we had basically broken things up into phases, depending on what our governor's orders were, what we were allowed to do to make sure that we were following CDC regulations and safety guidelines, et cetera. Suffolk Public Schools is starting to move forward with services for our school community. We recently allowed both students and parents to come to our buildings in order to pick up their personal belongings and to clean out their classrooms. Doing this allowed us to get a jumpstart on our summer cleaning and building improvement projects. On May 5th, we began our new student enrollment and kindergarten registration process. We are using our technology to allow parents to fill out the paperwork online and having contactless communication using Google Meet and appointments for when parents and or guardians arrive to our buildings. We are also reviewing our options for a full online registration process to occur in the very near future. Thank you to our students, parents, teachers, and instructional team for their work on our instructional packets, continuity of learning, and our mastery and virtual SPS model. We have received feedback on our scholastic packets and the cross-grade level material. They may not be as challenging for some of our students. We understand those concerns, and have encouraged families to explore additional resources that can be found on our continuity of learning website. As the foundation of the mastery SPS plan, given such a master previously period, we did not feel comfortable providing new material to our elementary students and to our students in K through 5, not currently being a part of the SPS Connect initiative. This would have been an. We have also received feedback regarding clarity on passing scores and assignment schedules and education with the learning plan and our virtual SPS model. Thank you to Dr. Davenport and Dr. Harrison. We have revised assignment schedules and provided additional clarity on a passing rate of 63% for the fourth of nine weeks. Providing instruction to our students at a cost of a little over $77,000 for our scholastic packets and only $8,000 for additional licenses for Edgenuity shows the effective and efficient manner in which our continuity of learning plan was developed. During the week of June 8th through June 12th, our school community will be provided with a brief survey to give us additional feedback on our continuity of learning plan. We have also released our plan for our seniors, the graduating class of 2020. Your administrators work extremely hard and listen to your feedback to come up with a memorable experience for all. I can't wait to see you all in your cap and gown pictures and to officially celebrate all of you on June 20th of 2020. I am also excited to see what your schools have in mind to celebrate you during your spirit week. As a reminder, when you are coming to take your cap and gown pictures, please continue to practice proper seating measures such as wearing your mask while you are waiting in line for your picture. Now, we do not expect you to have your mask on while you take your picture, but we still want all of our students and their families to be as safe as possible. I am also thrilled with the work from Dr. Whiting and his team as we work to expand our vision of meal plan. Beginning Monday, May 18th, 2020, our meal distribution plan will expand to seven days a week. Food deliveries will now take place twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays, with Tuesday packages being three days a week and Thursday packages being for four days a week. Our new meal plan also includes dinner. The level of support from Suffolk Public Schools has been tremendous and really shows the teamwork that we have here in the city of Suffolk. Lastly, we need to take a look at how education will look for Suffolk Public Schools in the future. We want to use our SPS Virtual Summer as a palette for expanding SPS Connect to our students in pre-K through 5th grade. I have the utmost confidence in Mr. Littlefield, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Davenport, and Ms. Lafferty as they take our vision and make it a reality. With SPS Virtual Summer being July 6th through August 6th, we will have a good snapshot at usability of the iReady program as the data can be used to develop personalized learning plans for our elementary students. We are excited about this opportunity as we plan for a hybrid learning model for the fall, if need be. We are also beginning to look at a learning management system in order to improve our learning platform for both staff and students. Suffolk Public Schools will continue to be both innovative and proactive and be planning for the fall 2020 semester. Thank you, Ms. Byron.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. I had one question, anyone else have any questions? I have one. Could you, Dr. Gordon, comment off the top of your head, how many students are participating in our meal program? How is that running?
Currently, they were delivering over 1,300 meals a day. And that number was fluctuating depending on, you know, who was actually showing up each and every day. And as you saw in the pictures that Ms. Ward showed in our good news report, the dedication of our transportation department and our food services department has just been tremendous. And that doesn't also include some of our walk-in traffic that was actually coming into Kings Fork High School to get meals as well. You know, Dr. Whiting wanted me to make sure that I pointed that out. So we're just so satisfied and happy with the way this really came together very quickly. Once we receive feedback, adjustments have been made, and it's going to be our plan to continue this model throughout the rest of the summer.
Thank you. I have personally heard a lot of good comments about that program. You know, people have commented to me that they thought it was an excellent thing that we were doing. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Ms. Story? Ms. Story?
Thank you. Dr. Gordon, I think the meal plan and bus stops and everything is really working well. A lot of great feedback on that. Really good feedback too with the teachers going in and, you know, the plan that was laid out in terms of packing up their rooms, it was a sad time, but it was laid out well. Everyone was, seemed able to get the things packed up. So I thought that was good. I'm, was wondering, in terms of evaluating this past time and looking ahead, will you include teachers in terms of a survey or evaluating how they felt it went to get feedback from them as well?
Yeah, the survey will go out to everyone, Ms. Story, and we're going to do that June 8th to the 12th. It's going to be a three to five question survey. And basically what we're looking at is what tweaks can be made to make the process better. We want to know, on our virtual SPS experience and even our mastery SPS model, the feedback that we're going to get from this survey is what we're going to try to address in case we have to be under these same circumstances when we start fall.
I know, I just want to pass on some feedback. I know Edgenuity had some wrong answer issues. And is there any chance, I thought the parents were extremely happy with the teachers using Google Classroom, and they've had so much training. I just hope that maybe you would consider an option of, you know, allowing our teachers to go ahead and teach through Google Classroom if they would like to, maybe having a blended choice of using Edgenuity or going ahead and teaching the classes if we end up in that situation. I just think there were a lot of parents that were so happy with their teachers, and I'm, I was really happy to hear that. They thought they were doing a phenomenal job through Google Classroom. And of course, we've given a lot of training and put a lot of money towards Google Classroom. So I, you know, if you would just think about that, I would certainly, I think there's maybe some options of, you know, if, depending on how long we have to go with this online program, I don't know what. online program, I don't know what the state's going to decide and of course, none of us do, but I'd just like to put that out there. I think there were parents who um parents who were so happy, teachers who were so happy with Google Classroom and maybe um if you would be willing to consider that going forward, that would be great, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Story, anyone else? Okay, moving along. Oh, Mr. Riddick, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay, uh first and foremost, I just want to um say thank you to uh Dr. Gordon and his team for the Suffolk Public Schools Response Plan and carrying it out to the team. Uh, where the borough I represent, we have a lot of people who really depends on those uh meals and working through Edgenuity, it's been consistent where students who had complications, their parents were able to go in and check. It's a great tool that they have been utilizing. And I also want to say thank you as well for the finance committee report. I know we are uncertain about what's going on right now, a lot of things hit us. We were blindsided by that. I just want to say thank you all for how you all are working together to really uh help us get through this storm. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Story?
I just had some feedback, is is the channel, is the YouTube channel still working, did it, did it shut down?
Yes, the YouTube stream is going, um, we've had several people say they're dropping it, I'm still seeing the stream going out, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just received that feedback too that they can't find it anywhere.
It's still streaming and we are recording this, so we will post the recording as soon as it's over if there are, if there are interruptions in stream after it processes.
Hey, great, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Story. Um, moving on, um supplemental insurance, um, Ms. Forsman?
Good evening, uh, we just want to give you the information that we are out for bid for our supplemental insurances. Uh, these are things like cancer policies, heart policies, they're completely voluntary for the staff. Uh, they are pre-tax, so they're part of our 125 plan through the IRS. Uh, but we are out for bid for those, now there's no cost to Suffolk Public Schools for these. Uh, and we are considering vendors, we, I think Anthony told me today, we received 10 proposals for this thing that closed. Uh, and so we wanted you to be aware that we're out for bid for these, that we're looking to find the best deals we can for our employees. That those who have policies, and we have quite a few folks who have these policies, uh can expect to have them grandfathered in if they're 15 years or older as of July 1st. Which means that we will still allow them to keep those policies uh at their same rates because that's what locks these policies in. Um, if they are less than that, then they will have the choice to either have them um pay the company directly, if they decide to stay with NTA, they'll be able to pay NTA directly. It would not come through payroll deduction, nor would it be pre-tax. Uh, or go with a new company and choose a policy that we hope is going to be a much better policy for them. Now, again, we don't know if we will choose NTA or another vendor, but we did want to alert you to the fact that we are up for bid and that we may have a change in vendor and what that would mean for employees, just so that everybody's on the same page.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Forsman. And Dr. Gordon, Ms. Ward, calendar of special events?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, so as we all know, May 4th through the 8th was our National Appreciation Week and uh Ms. Ward's team did a tremendous job of having our principals have different video messages that were going out uh throughout the day, every day of the week. We also had members of the superintendent's cabinet uh release an email message to the entire staff, uh thanking them as well. And we also may want to make sure as our teachers were coming in today, um, on this entire week, we wanted to try to give them some type of gift that they could actually use since we knew they were spending a lot of time at their desk and on their computers with our virtual learning models, office hours, providing support to our students. Uh, so Ms. Ward and Ms. Workman came up and found us the list of blocks of teacher supplies that our teachers were picking up this week just to show our overall appreciation. Um, this past meeting also was National School Nurse Day on May 6th, Teacher Assistant Appreciation Day. You know, our teacher assistants and paraprofessionals, I've actually had several of them that communicated, emailed me, they just wanted to come in to help. Whatever they could possibly to help our teachers, to help our administrators that were in the building. Right now, we're really working with a lot of our thousands of curriculum records because, you know, these are things that normally would have happened throughout the normal school day that could have been done during planning periods or other timeframes. But due to what's really limiting how many folks are actually in the building at a time, it was just so refreshing that we actually had teacher assistants and professionals that wanted to find a way to come in and support our schools or our staff members that were working basically every day. Um, Dr. Brown did a tremendous job also for Teacher of the Year Virtual Recognition, thank you to all of our board members that tuned in for that. As I mentioned on that day, I didn't know he also had some great DJ skills playing Cool in the Gang and Celebration um as we were recognizing our Teachers of the Year. And again, the support that the teachers spoke about that they were getting from each one of their faculties, to me, that's what it's all about and it really reinforced that idea that Suffolk Public Schools is family. As we mentioned earlier and Ms. Byron mentioned in her Finance Committee Report, uh the City Council Meeting final vote on the budget will be on May 20th, uh which is next Wednesday. Um, Suffolk Public Schools will be closed again officially on uh Monday, May 25th for the Memorial Day holiday. Um, we mentioned earlier that we will have our Board Adoption Vote on May 26th. And we also discussed the support that we were getting from the Suffolk Education Foundation for their gifts for our Teachers of the Year. They are actually having their annual fundraising gala for the arts. This will now be a virtual meeting, a virtual celebration that will now also take place May 27th. And our next school board meeting is June 11th. Uh, those are the upcoming calendar events, Madam Chair for Suffolk Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Uh, next we have the consent agenda, this is an action item. Ms. Story?
I would like to pull the um minutes out of the consent agenda, please. And on the minutes, um, I would like to see that the minutes from last uh meeting reflect in the beginning, um, at the five o'clock meeting, um, why two board members, there has to be some explanation that two board members were not there and were not polled, not voting for the meeting. And the minutes don't reflect that, so to be accurate, if we could get those minutes um to reflect the beginning of last month's meeting, I would appreciate that, please.
Ms. Gardner? Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Do you want? Dr. Buck, if you have something?
So the motion should indicate that the minutes would be approved with the correction. Is that? Mr. Wall, would the the motion to approve the minutes include the correction that Mrs. Story mentioned?
I think that the, what the motion should be would be to approve the consent agenda without the minutes from the last meeting.
Just eliminate the minute.
Right, and then what will end up happening is that the minutes would actually be carried over into a new business item. At which time, there could be a motion made to approve the minutes with the recommended change made by Board Member Story. Or it could be a motion to simply table those minutes to allow for um the change to be made. And then at your next board meeting, you will just vote on the minutes from that meeting.
Okay, okay. Dr. Buck?
Okay.
So I moved the consent agenda be adopted with uh the exclusion of item three, the school board meeting minutes. Oh, Mr. Riddick?
Sasha, please unmute your room. Thank you.
Is it possible that we can just table those minutes uh for the next meeting? To give us time for the correction to be made versus pulling the mountain, having to bring them back as a new business item? Or could we just?
Because, because, because the actual uh motion on the floor is to approve the consent agenda. So you have to take an action on those other items. So the motion is simply at this time to approve the consent agenda without the minutes. And then you're going to actually have to talk about those minutes later on in your meeting under new business, at which time there could be a motion made to table
those minutes.
Those minutes.
Okay. Gotcha.
So is there a second? Is there a second? Because we need to clear our bills. Ms. Mayo?
I I second the motion.
Okay. All for vote. Board members, please vote. Board Chair Byron?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Motion carry? Uh, next, under unfinished unfinished business, uh we have none, so moving on to new business. Um, first, we have the Resolution 19 slash 20 dash 29, a resolution of the school board for the city of Suffolk granting the superintendent the authority to extend end of year funds for fiscal year 2019, 2020 to certain designated repayers or purchases needed by Suffolk Public Schools. This is an action item. Madam Chair, I move to approve Resolution 19 slash 20 dash 29. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Riddick?
I have a question um during this time. Um, I just comment on Dr. Uh, to Dr. Gordon. I noticed that the resurfacing of tennis courts was in there for operational funds, is that something that um athletic, the athletic funds could cover? And that that would give additional cost for the operational funds?
Yes, ma'am, we took a look at that, Ms. Story, but we also have to remember that our athletic budgets were also cut by one third since we were not able to have a spring sports season. And with this being tennis courts, we actually looked at that being more of a capital expense. Um, and Ms. Forsman, you can feel free to jump in here, but I believe those tennis courts hadn't been done for 10 to 12 years. And we're not, we're not a, we're not a hundred percent sure specifically how much that's going to cost. And I would not want to try to relay that expense to our schools and our athletic department with our athletic departments having an overall revenue shortfall this year, losing one third of their sports.
So they've had a revenue shortfall, is that what you said? Is there some?
Yes. No ticket sales, Ms. Story, for spring sports because we really didn't have a spring sports season.
So is that something, um, Ms. Forsman, is that something that um at a future meeting, we could get a document to see how that, how that, you know, how the sports money, the revenue that comes in and what goes out?
Um, well, those are held at the school level and certainly we can bring those to the board and let you see them. Um, I think too that uh what Dr. Gordon didn't touch on is that you have some schools that could possibly afford it and others that can't. So it becomes an equity issue of whether you're going to um supply that to all schools or only one school. Um, so again, this is something that normally the operating fund pays for, for the schools as overall facilities uh and and keeping up the facilities. Normally, the funds from athletics, uh we try to let that be stuff that goes to the athletics themselves, not the actual facilities. So, um, but we'll be happy to bring those numbers back to you.
Hey, thanks a lot, I appreciate that, thank you, Dr. Gordon, for that explanation.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? No comment?
No.
Ready to vote? Ready to vote?
Board members, please vote. Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Chair Byron?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
I'm sorry, please repeat?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carry?
Next, we have Resolution 19 slash 20 dash 30, Resolution to approve the terms and conditions of an agreement of lease between Suffolk Public Schools and the Children's Center at Booker T. Washington Elementary School, this is an action item.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Resolution to approve the terms and conditions of the agreement lease between Suffolk Public Schools and Children's Center Incorporated at Booker T. Washington Elementary School.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Ms. Story. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Mittnick?
Yes, Ms. Byron, um, I'd like to ask Mr. Waller, is this identical to the um memorandum of understanding from last year or have there been any changes?
No, it is identical, the only thing that has changed are the dates.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mittnick?
Board members? Ready for the vote? Okay. Board Chair Byron?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Motion carry?
Thank you, Ms. Gardner, uh next we have Ordinance 19. Excuse me, we have uh an additional item. Dr. Buck needs to get the policy
Just as an intro, the Policy Committee report, just as an intro to these two items, just as an intro. The Policy Committee met on May 7th uh to discuss two, the next two ordinances. The Policy Committee met just as the Policy Committee has met since 20 13, since I've been on the po- Policy Committee on the school board with Mr. Waller as facilitator and the two Policy Committee members on the board. That has been since 2013, nothing changed. Each month, we considered two policies, the first policy was Ordinance 19 20 66, amending chapter three, article one, section three, dash 1.5, entitled Administrative Organization Plan of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board. And this is a first reading, this is actually an information item. We did not change the way that we're moving things, it was, it just has to do with the organizational chart, the organizational plan, giving the superintendent the authority to change the organizational plan. It is an information item, a first reading. The second item is and a first reading as well. Ordinance 19 20 dash 67, amending chapter two, article two, section two, dash 3.2, entitled Regular Meetings, Open Meeting Requirement, Notice of Meetings, Agenda Packages Made Available, Placing Items on the Agenda Specifically in That Area, Recording of Meetings Permitted, Special Meetings, Quorum, Minutes of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board, and this is a first reading. As an intro to that, each month, as we prepare, the reason that we look at that, looked at that, each month as we prepare to review the agenda, the chair and superintendent receive numerous requests for additional items added to the agenda. The number of item requests can come from fewer than three members with the items resulting in no fewer than 10 and often 20 additional items being requested to add to the agenda. Often inconsistent with the topics being covered or the advertised topics being covered. And as a matter of attempting to handle all the requests in a fair and equitable way, the Policy Review Committee looked at the Policy Review Committee looked at similar practices in neighboring areas. Some of our neighbors reported having very few problems in that the issues never come up with their boards. Virginia Beach Schools did report having similar issues with some of their board members attempting to add various items to their agenda. We looked at their policy, which reads almost just like ours. So as we looked at their policy, which reads, and I will read specifically from theirs, a proposed agenda for the meetings. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Uh, School Board members shall present to the chairman or the School Board member assigned to the agenda planning for the forthcoming meeting, a request for the inclusion of agenda of matters they wish to have considered, thus allowing time to prepare necessary background materials. School Board member may have the privilege of adding items to the published agenda upon request of the chairman by the School Board member as early as reasonably feasible, and an affirmative vote of School Board membership present at the meeting should any School Board member object. In essence, any School Board member can object, and the board will vote. We saw this as a fair way to give everyone the opportunity. If each and every School Board member attempts to add multiple items to the School Board agenda, we would never get through the School Board agenda. We saw this as an opportunity to have a posi- policy available, to give everybody an opportunity to have their concerns heard in a fair way. This is a first reading, so that everybody gets the opportunity to look at it, to go back, consider it, and next month, be prepared to vote on whatever it is you would like to consider. It is an informational item for this month. That is our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. Any comments? Ms. Story?
Um, yes, it seems that, from what I hear you saying, Dr. Buck, the, the main concern is the number. Uh, you repeated that several times, is the number of items I heard you. So if I'm hearing you correctly, the number of items is your concern.
I said the number and kind.
The number and kind.
Yes.
So, so is there, so the number we could put in the policy every person? Two. And how many of the boards, um, in our district that have these, if it's the number, um, meet twice a month? Perhaps that's how they get more items talked about because they meet twice a month where we only meet once. That could be a difference that we would have to compare. And it might seem reasonable to talk about the number, if that's appropriate. I don't know if we can cut, the kind is very subjective. Um, I don't know how the kind would be fleshed out. Um, but that's, I just wanted to confirm what I heard you saying. It's the number and the kind, and perhaps we could, um, talk about the number if there's that many, or, um, limited to one per board member, I don't know. But, but I just wanted to make sure that I heard you correctly.
You heard me when I said the number and the kind. When I said the kind, just so that we can be clear, when there are administrative issues, as we have outlined under our board norms and our policies, issues that are administrative that should be handled by the superintendent, if we follow the V S B A standards that we, most of us have been trained in, we know that they are followed by the superintendent. There are matters that the superintendent and the administrative staff would handle, so they are not issues that we need to discuss at any rate. Kind would be under there. Uh, so school boards that have discussed those matters, at least school board members that I've discussed them with, and the S B A training that we've had, would lead us to believe that some things we don't even need to discuss because they don't fall under our purview. The numbers, when you come to fourteen out of eighteen questions that you have or things that you want from the superintendent, there are seven of us. And if each of us asked for fourteen different things, whether we had two meetings a month or five meetings a month, we'd never get through them. So there are some issues that we could never cover. But at this rate, each board member, all seven of us, have the opportunity to let people know how we feel. And this was the only fair way that we could come up with as a policy committee, to let every board member make his opinions or her opinions heard.
Well, I do.
So it's, it's.
Appreciate, I mean, I do appreciate your hyperbole of each of us, um, giving fourteen, and I can certainly see your point on that. Um, but our do, our protocols do say, um, in, that we all agreed on. Um, it, we, it says each board member shall contact the chair via email to request an item to be added to the agenda. The chair will respond to the requesting board member via email to let them know of the status of the request. The item will be added to the current or to the next month's agenda. So, um, that was, I have it here, that was something we agreed on, um, when we were at the V S B A conference.
Um, that's, that's our poli- that's our policy, uh, not our, not our pro- protocol, that's our policy. Uh, that is, that is our policy, I think, that you read from. But at any rate, whatever, this is the opportunity for the entire board to decide. And again, it was not done any differently than it was when you and I served on it. So it's not an opportunity for us to, it's changed clips. It is actually something that, it's an information item. And, uh, we can vote on it.
Right, good, good time to discuss it. And, um, you know, I think, um, perhaps the board can think about a way to, um, follow our current policy. And if there's a concern about numbers, I think that's something that we should address, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment? Uh, Dr. Gordon, I have a question. Mr. Mittnick? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Mittnick? Yes. Mr. Mittnick?
Uh, Dr. Brooks Buck was talking about items that were more for the superintendent than for the School Board to decide. If a board member is truly presenting an item that is board business,
Mm-hmm.
that's, there'll be, um, an item that will be put out for, uh, a hold. Because if it's board business, it would make sense that that item would be given consideration for the agenda because we are the School Board, and I'm talking about items that are board business. How will that be affected?
Ms. Mittnick, if you will read the policy as it is written, each of the board members will look at it. Let's say, for instance, if it's a policy, just as a for instance, if it's a matter that we know we're going to discuss next month, if we know we're going to discuss it in June, and it's going to be on the board agenda, then it wouldn't need to be on the May agenda, if we know that it's an item that's going to be on the June agenda. Uh, it's not that the item is not going to be discussed, it's just going to be discussed next month. If it's an item that it is something that the board is going to discuss, then each of the board members knows it's something that we should discuss. It's not a matter of deleting anybody's opinion, it's just something that we need to discuss. And if it is, then you do what you need to do to have it discussed. It's not deleting anybody's, anybody's issue. Uh, but if it's only my issue, say I'm concerned about, uh, I don't know, something that only I'm concerned about in my, my area and no one else is concerned about it, then it's really not a discussion, it's just me talking. It's not a discussion if I'm the only one that's concerned about it. It's me wanting to speak on camera.
Oh, Mr. Riddick? Sorry, I couldn't see.
Josh, please unmute the mic.
Mr. Riddick?
Mr. Riddick?
There you go. Um, Madam Chair, I ask that we, uh, I, I move that we postpone this matter until the second reading. Right now, it's just informational, so it's still in the developmental stages. I think we are trying to hash it out a little too soon. Um, I think we should take this information, uh, chew it on, digest, propose some solutions back to the Policy Review Committee, and at the time next month, when it's action item come up, uh, either we can vote it up or vote it down. So I move that we postpone this matter until next month as it's scheduled to do. There's enough emotion will be necessary for it.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. Um, anyone else? I, I just want to say, Dr. Gordon, all board members have the choice of conferring with you as superintendent at any time about any items, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, and you will try to get them the answers that they need.
Usually pretty quickly, yes.
That's right, right, you will find the answers. Also, Mr. Waller, uh, under Virginia law, the School Board can establish guidelines for management of any official business, right?
That is correct.
Thank you. Just to clarify. Any other comments? This is informational items, correct? So next month, we will have second reading.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and I think, uh, we wanted to ask you, oh, excuse me, Mr. Mittnick?
I, yes, uh, Madam Chair. Um, since early this year, I've been reminding the board that, um, the bylaws for the Special Ed Advisory Committee are different than the, uh, timeline for the board to develop how we're going to assign members to, uh, our citizen advisory committees. And as you received a email from the chair of the Special Ed Advisory Committee, as did I, um, that is why I was asking for an item to be on this month's agenda because their calendar starts with the July meeting that the Special Ed Advisory Committee has. If we are not even going to discuss the, how we're going to assign people to the citizen advisory committees till June, and then we have to come up with a means of how the people can indicate, um, that is why I wanted a discussion on this month's agenda because, um, this Special Ed Advisory Committee on which I serve as a consultant um, has contacted you and asked for a decision earlier than what the board is currently planning on discussing. And, um, I was not trying to be difficult, I was trying to present a agenda item um, that is timely. And, um, that's all I have to say. Uh, but I, I really think that this board has not, we have not done what we should have been doing earlier this year when we discussed, uh, assignment of people. We haven't discussed since that time, since January. We have not discussed how citizens, how members will be assigned to citizen advisory committee. And now we're coming up to July first, and the time.
Point of order.
Is, is, uh, with us, and we should be making these decisions.
Yes, nice. Mr. Riddick?
Point of order, uh, Madam Chair, we are straying away from our agenda. Uh, and it's beginning to be a little time-consuming. Um, I recommend that we, uh, get back on, on task and target to handle those items that's before us, that are listed on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. Next, uh, we have, um, return to the minutes that we removed from the consent agenda. There's a discussion on that. Mr. Riddick?
Madam Chair, I ask that we would table those minutes, um, to give us time to reflect the necessary changes as requested by board member story, and we can take it back up at our next meeting in June.
Second the mo- is that a motion, Mr. Riddick?
Uh, yes, ma'am, that's a motion. I move that we table those minutes, uh, to give the cha- uh, to give our clerk time to make the recommended corrections presented by board member story, and we would, uh, handle this matter at our June twenty twenty board meeting.
We have a. Dr. Buck?
Second a motion.
We have a first, a motion and a second. Ms. Gardner? Uh, board members, please vote. Board Chair Byram?
Yes.
Um, Vice Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Mittnick?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Board Member Story?
Yes.
Motion carry? Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Uh, next, we have public speakers on non-agenda topics. I think we have, uh, several of those, Ms. Gardner?
Yes, we do, um, Madam Chair. Um, the first is Gabrielle Wiggins, four twenty, Tetin Circle, Suffolk, Virginia, two three four three five. Um, I wanted to, I wanted to address the board in reference to rescheduling of red school graduation. I did get the email in reference to what the new plans are, which I think is good, is good idea because nothing could be done at all, but I did notice that some of the other districts have made the decision to reschedule at a later date. I wanted to know if there was a specific reason why Suffolk chose not to reschedule later in the year. Also, I was wondering if there was any way possible that the virtual ceremony could take place at a later time in the day for family members that may not be able to view the ceremony at nine A M. My son has an aunt that lives in California, um, that had plans on attending his graduation, but with the pandemic, she can no doubt, she cannot, but she would like, she would still like to share this moment with him and see, and to see it virtually, but it would be extremely early. Thank you so much, Gabrielle Wiggins.
And next, we have Mr. Troy Maryfield.
Troy Maryfield, sixteen sixteen West Road, Suffolk, Virginia, two three four three six. Electronic meeting content and ordinance discussion. I would like to address the board for two particular reasons. The first is that according to Virginia School Boards, Boards Association, Digital School Board Meetings, page one. In the second situation, all school board members may participate electronically when the governor has declared a state of emergency. In that situation, the purpose of the meeting must be to address the emergency. Boards may only make decisions that must be made immediately and where the failure to do so could result in irrevocable public harm. Whether any particular action by, by a school board fits within that description requires a fact-specific determination that should be made in consultation with the school board's lawyer. Additionally, during the Suffolk School Board meeting in April, both the board chair and the board attorney stated and reiterated the above guidance and explained to the board that there would not be any business allowed that did not rise to the level of addressing the current emergency as declared by the governor. In addition to this discussion, there was a motion and vote stating that from the April Board Meeting minutes, Vice Chair Brooks Buck indicated that there is some business we need to take care of. She requested the following. Requested a motion for electronic meeting from this point on as a mechanism for taking care of business. She then read the motion for electronic school board meeting. Member Story moved, and Member Mittnick seconded the motion that the main meeting of the Suffolk City School Board be conducted electronically as provided for by Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven zero eight point two A three for the sole purpose of addressing the effects of the emergency and more specifically the need for social distancing and its effect on the continuity of instruction, graduation, and maintenance of school facilities and school programs as presented. Upon a roll call vote, the vote was A seven, name, zero, the motion carries seven to zero. I do not believe that two of the agenda items meet the standard of taking immediate action or even addressing them at this time without a pressing need and an in-depth discussion on why this needs to take place. The second item that I want to highlight is the necessity of ordinance nineteen twenty dash sixty-seven. On tonight's meeting agenda, ordinance nineteen twenty dash sixty-seven, amending chapter two, article two, section two dash three point two, entitled Regular Meetings, Open Meeting Requirement, Notice of Meetings, Agenda Packages Made Available, Placement of Items on the Agenda, Recording of Meetings Permitted, Special Meetings, Quorum, Minutes of the Policies of the Suffolk City School Board, first reading. My reading of this change tells me- My reading of this change tells me that if I have something that might, may be highly important to me and other Suffolk citizens, Suffolk citizens, if discussed in the light of day, that only one dissenting person can decide that it is not important. In other words, something happens, in other words, something happens that is of high importance to me and I contact my duly elected school board member. My borough board member decides in their elected and professional capacity and judgment that it is important enough to be placed on the agenda. How is it right to allow one individual to decide that a school board member's judgment is less important than another board, board member's duty and judgment? Personally, if I was a board member and this ordinance gets passed, I, and I had a late agenda item that I feel is extraordinary and needs immediate attention and doesn't make it on the agenda, then I would more than likely, in general, not allow any other board member's future late agenda additions to be placed on the agenda until the ordinance is returned to the existing language. You will give incredible power to one person to decide important, importance over the rest of the board and citizens of Suffolk. Why is it that this non-emergency ordinance needs to be discussed in just this re, disregard to, discuss in disregard to state law for school board meetings held under the governor's emergency declaration? And what is the underlying reason for changing this ordinance? It is, is it that too many late additions have been coming in and many feel they are frivolous? And this, if this is the case, then the board member should be retain, should be trained as to what is frivolous and what is not in relation to school board business. There seems to be a hidden agenda here that needs to see the light of day. And that hidden agenda seems to me to be the emergency issue that needs to be discussed in the current emergency declaration, not silencing one of your own members. Or is this a solution in search of a problem?
And next we have um, Ms. Dr. Deborah Walstrom.
Um, who's her address? Okay, I'm sorry. Um, there are, Dr. Deborah Walstrom. And I'm sorry, I do not have her address. Um, there are two items I would like to address. One, refusal of two board members to access meetings. And two, the proposed policy related, related to policy items on the agenda. Refusal of two board members to access meetings. Why were two board members excluded from April's public meeting portion of the five o'clock session of the board? And why were the same two board members denied remote access to the closed meeting? What provides the authority to block these two members from full participation in the whole meeting, including open and closed session? As I understand, two board members were not sent the links to join the open session, although both were ready to fulfill their school board responsibilities. The rest of the board just carried on without care or concern of the ramifications of their decision to deny citizens, to deny citizens in two boroughs representation at meetings of the board. I find this incredulous because other board members determined that the two individuals would be blocked from the closed session and the preceding open session. I believe this action to disallow board members to participate in the meeting to be concerning and inequitable. The dismissal, dismissal action does not support the oath that these five board members made. There is nothing that says a board member cannot attend an executive meeting electronically, nothing. This is a vote five members made, thereby resulting in denying the rights of two board members in doing their job. And yes, individual school board members do have rights, and you voted those rights away. It is not the place of school board members to determine which members can attend closed meetings. All school board members are duly elected to their, to their positions, and it is the place of the superintendent and board chair to ensure that each board member has what is needed to fulfill his or her duties as school board members. I hope the minutes will be corrected this evening to reflect the illegitimate action of the board. Proposed policy amendment related to placing items on the agenda. I also find it concerning that on the agenda for the evening is a first reading of ordinance policy nineteen slash twenty dash sixty-seven, more especially part E, which speaks to add, to add language to the agenda that does not support the rights of individual school board members. E, if any member of the school board isn't interested in having an item placed on the school board agenda for an approaching school board meeting, the school board member must submit the request in writing and the request must be received by the school board chair with a copy sent to the school superintendent at least fourteen calendar days prior to the scheduled meeting of the school board. If a request is not received within fourteen calendar days, the item will be considered for placement on the agenda at the subsequent meeting of the school board. When a school board member requests placement of an agenda, of an item on the agenda, the chair will immediately poll members of the school board separately pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty-seven ten B for the purpose of ascertaining a member's position with respect to placing an item on the agenda. If any member of the school board objects, the member must be placed before members of the school board at the, at the upcoming meeting, and there must be an affirmative vote of the school board to add the item to the agenda. In the policy committee meeting, there was no discussion of why this policy amendment has been brought forward. But during the policy committee, Mr. Waller indicated how he sees things playing out, indicating prior discussion of the policy had taken place. Also, at the April meeting, the board chair allowed new motions, agenda items, to be made during board member comments. Member Brooks-Buck made mo, made motions during board member comments. The item was placed on the agenda, the items was not, the item was not placed on the agenda nor did discussion of the motion take place. The motions were made and approved. How does this square with the agenda amendment to the policy? It doesn't. This is yet another example showing how select school board members um, deny the right to representation of other school board members and their constituents. It also reflects that it would be an easier route to have a topic discussed without the hassle of going through the route suggested by the policy amendment. On another note, the evening's agenda um, does not reflect the vote taken by school board members during member Brooks-Buck comments. The board voted to hold electronic meetings from this point on as a mechanism for taking care of business for the sole purpose, emphasis added, of addressing the effects of the emergency and more specifically, the need for social distancing and its effect on continuity of instruction, graduation, and maintenance of school facilities and school programs. Does the evening's agenda align to the vote? I believe some agenda items do and some don't. I trust this communication will not be welcome, but please know that I deeply appreciate your review and consideration of the comments within.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Are there any others? No others? Uh, next we have informational items. Any questions concerning informational items? If not, any other comments? This meeting is adjourned.